Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator comptroller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator comptroller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
All right, we're gonna get started. Everybody take their seats, please.
I know. I'm one minute past, and I'm already hearing it. That's right.
Good evening. Welcome to the February 13th Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask our clerk assistant to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start with Commissioner Vonck, Antor, Morgan, Jones, Vice Chair Steck, Ponstein, Voorhees, Coleman, Breevy, Salfeld, Sparks, Melton, Hennessy, Talon, Lukowski, Womack, Wooden, Skaggs, Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 16 present and three absent.
Thank you. We're on to invocation, and I'll call on Commissioner Antor.
Good evening, everybody. One of my biggest fears since coming on board as the county commissioner is forgetting that I was to do the invocation. And I was reminded on the way down here. And since I don't have the talents of Commissioner Voorhees or Vonck, I thought, okay, what do I do? And so, I thought, well, I know at one point, and one of the disciples asked Jesus, how do I pray? So that's kind of where I'm at. And Jesus taught the disciples how to pray, and he gave them the Lord's Prayer. So that's what I'm gonna go with tonight. And when we get to the point of whether it's trespassers or debtors, we'll go with trespassers because that's what I'm used to. So if you'd bow your heads and pray with me, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. King and co, that will be done. And all the citizens in heaven, give us today our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. By the kingdom, the power, and glory forever and ever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Commissioner Antor. We are on to item five on the agenda, and I will call up Joseph.
Janitis.
Janitis, to give us an update on the census. Welcome. Welcome to Kent County.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually from Grand Rapids, so happy, very happy to be here. Usually I walk around, so sorry if I seem a little static here. My goal will be just to give you a little bit of information about the importance of the census, which you likely know, some operations, and then maybe some things that you can do. So it's gonna be a very brief overview. So does anybody know why we're doing the census? Yes. My commissioner, actually. I'm in Heritage Hill.
Want me to answer?
Yes, absolutely. Please. Why are we doing the census?
A natural response. The census is really important at a local point of view because everything from government funding, federal, state, for education, if we're gonna get the funds we need for our city, everybody needs to be counted. So don't believe the myths that, you know, this is gonna be used any other way. Other agencies just can't get into this information, but it will help us get funded. So you need to be counted.
I missed you. I'm sorry.
Joseph, I'm gonna let you know that if you interact with them, they count toward your time.
That's okay. That's okay.
So it's fine.
I appreciate crowd interaction.
Just let you know, though.
I appreciate. Filiposter.
They all like to talk.
So besides funding, of course, we have apportionment of our representatives, Electoral College votes for the state, planning information. So as Commissioner Womack said, it's very important. In terms of how the census actually goes about, we have five steps. The first step is just what we've already done, identifying residential addresses. Second step is kind of what I'm doing right now. So it's passing out information, giving education, forming partnerships, basically motivating people, priming people to respond to the census. Does anybody know when you can start responding to the census? Hopefully, we can get a 10-second answer for this one. Yes?
I believe it's April 1.
It is not April 1, but you can respond on April 1. It is mid-March. So that's when all households, or at least those who are receiving U.S. mail, they'll receive an invitation to respond online or by phone. That self-response will stay open until July 31st, 2020. So we have the fourth step, non-response follow-up. That's when we knock on doors, asking people to respond if they haven't responded by the end of April. The last step is just tabulating the data, so putting everything together. Any questions on that, on the steps? Okay. I like to say out loud that people who are going door-to-door, people who are going to be capturing responses if they're knocking on your doors, they're gonna have technology. So it's going to be an online, paperless preference to capture these. It's a little bit more efficient. In terms of making sure that the person at your door is from the census, there are a few resources. For instance, the person will have a census computer. They'll have a census badge. I'd be happy to provide the website where you can look up census workers. So if you have a deep concern that the person at your door is not from the census, you can type in Joe Janitis, and you'll find out that I'm working for the United States Census. That website also has information about where you're going to receive your mailer from. I think it's important to know, as commissioners, that we're not gonna be asking for credit card information, social security numbers, driver's license. This is very basic information. We're not gonna be sending out emails. We're not gonna be sending out QR codes. There's certainly the potential for fraud or scams, and I think it's important to know what exactly we're asking. One thing that we're still working on quite tirelessly in Kent County is to encourage people to work for the census. Currently, we still need about 2,000 individuals to help us with our effort. So it is a significant number. We are over, we're about 65% of the way there. So in terms of helping us or helping promote the census, if you have social media, if you want us to come to your organization, for instance, we're happy to help people apply to the census. In Kent County, it's a $20-an-hour job. You just need to be 18, no specific work experience. So certainly, an opportunity for many individuals, even a high school senior. Does that yellow light mean I have five minutes, or am I over?
You're at five.
Okay. Very good.
Sweet.
So part of my job is basically this, talking with people, forming partnerships, working in the community. Many different organizations have formed formal partnerships with the U.S. Census Bureau. You might know that the state of Michigan has formed a state complete count commission. The city of Grand Rapids has formed their complete count committee. Basically, the main purpose of these commissions or committees is to make sure we're counting people. We're not missing people. There are historically undercounted populations, demographics, and I'm reaching out to you all because you are trusted voices. You are leaders. You represent possibly different agencies or have connections with different agencies. For instance, schools, churches, businesses. People look to you and look to those organizations, and if they see, oh, you know, Myers is promoting the census, it must be important. It must be something that I should do, or it certainly isn't a scam. So that's really why I'm here. I think that's the biggest thing in terms of passing that information on whatever you can, if it's in a newsletter, if it's in social media, if it's just word of mouth. That's super important. You may have also seen some billboards around town. I know I have. Some of our partnerships extend into the Michigan Nonprofit Association. Be Counted is their website. They have a lot of good resources as well. And then these are just some of the harder-to-count demographics. I like to mention that children under 5, for instance, those, that demographic is, was harder to count. We missed about 1 million individuals from 0 to 5 in the 2010 census. So certainly a large number. And that can be because of a variety of reasons. But even our snowbirds. So I have a quick question for you all. If you are, if you pay your taxes here in Kent County, but you are going down to Florida for seven months of the year, where should you be counted?
Florida.
Florida. That's correct.
Yep. That was me.
Thank you, Diane.
Just to let you know.
Fantastic. Thank you for the quick response, too.
In a township.
What about, let's say you are from Macomb County, and you have your kid going to Grand Valley full-time. Where should they be counted? Their driver's license says Macomb County. Their mail goes to Macomb County. Their parents claim them on their taxes in Macomb County. Their voter registered in Macomb County. Where should they be counted?
Do their parents pay their insurance, too?
They pay their insurance, too. Everything. Where should they be counted?
Why would you want to be from Macomb County?
So the answer is Grand Valley. The reason is, is because it's where you reside the majority of the time. So in general, if you can't figure that out, that's April 1st. It's wherever you are on April 1st. But if you can, it's the majority of your time. So if you're a snowbird that's only spending five months in Florida and seven months in Kent County, you should be counted here. And it's passing that information on to that's important. Just briefly, if you're interested, there are lots of interesting maps I'm happy to pass on as well, that just show some of the predicted harder-to-count areas. One of the, this is, I believe, Meskegan County, not Kent County. One of the areas that are harder to count have to do with renters, so that's another harder-to-count population. Lot of turnover there. That's really all I have. Thank you so much for having me here today. I appreciate it.
All right. Do we have questions? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. So the first one that I had is you very quickly shared something along the lines of $20 per hour. Let's circle back to that for just a minute.
Right.
So is that like every census job, or is it up to $20 an hour?
That is the minimum pay for Kent County. Every job will at least be $20 an hour.
And I looked at your written material, and it says to find out about census jobs to go to 2020census.gov/jobs. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Thank you, Diane. I appreciate that. It is 2020census.gov/jobs.
I'll be putting that on my social media. And 18 and older, right? That was the other piece? 18 and older.
18 and older. You do have to be a legal resident to work as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Yeah, I was just wondering, you mentioned something, you said you missed a million. Yes, 500. I guess if we know that, how do we know we missed a million? And is there some sort of formula that can be used for people that don't comply, where you kind of take a guess based on noncompliance and things that, you know, jump up every time we do one of these things? Is there a formula that allows you to take a real good best guess?
That's a good question. I don't exactly have the answer for. I do know, at least in terms of making a best guess, the closest when we make a best guess is when we're knocking on doors. Someone's not there, then we might go to a neighbor or perhaps an adjoining apartment and ask them, are you aware of any individual in here? Do you have an idea who they are? So that's when we try to use periphery information.
But do you know how you came up with the million?
No. I believe it was using different programs and research outside of, outside of the census, but I don't believe they were added in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just recalling a similar conversation where they were using the American Community Survey data juxtaposed to this to show low response rates in certain census tracks here in Kent County are as low as 30, 20%. And looking at this list of hard-to-count demographics, often we've seen there in areas of poverty, communities of color, renters. And so when it comes to hiring of census workers, is there gonna be a prioritization for those who resided within that census track, who reside near that census track to make that personal connection, so there's a higher likelihood of having a, having a pre-existing personal connection, having an ability to get a more accurate count? Is that being valued in the hiring process?
That's an excellent question. Yes, actually, we, the first place that individual, the priority for that individual to work is going to be in their neighborhood where they are from. So that's, yes. Yes.
Commissioner, anymore?
I'm good.
Commissioner Womack.
As I happen to be on the census committee, so I just wanted to add that I think is excellent, being on the committee, being on the inside, getting a chance to see all the outreach that was done into communities of colors, including for the different languages. When we think of bilingual, me and we think about, you know, the Spanish and English, but finding out we have over 22 languages here. We have a lot of people from overseas, whether it's Europe, but Africa, all over. And it's just a lot of work that's going into this. And I think the mayor put a great census committee that's really reflective of the city of Grand Rapids, but also at our committee, we had people from other counties that were there and just different parts of Kent County that were there. So it was a great time to see all of us come together, to work together, to make sure everybody's counted, so we can be represented politically, as well as when it comes to the monies that's coming back into the influx of this community in this county. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. I can certainly second the efforts by the city of Grand Rapids and Mayor Bliss. They've had a very big impact in Grand Rapids and outside. And just to mention the languages, there's language guides in 59 languages, as well as Braille in large print. So that's also available at census, 2020census.gov.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given the potential for an app to fail at tabulating data, are there any concerns with that as part of the whole census process?
So you gave me a good opportunity to kind of clarify something, that there is no app, but it is, it is, it is a website. So hopefully, that makes it a little bit better. Obviously, anything's possible for failing, but I know this has been tested numerous times to try to make sure that it's both secure and working.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for taking the time tonight. I just had one question. Two things, actually. One, I just kind of wondered the same thing, cybersecurity and all of that. And then also, could you provide our communications director with some sort of post that we could then all put out so that we can, okay, perfect.
I'd be happy to do that. We have some pre-made messages, and I know the city of Grand Rapids has some more customized things as well.
Great. Okay. And we do already have some of it on our website, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you all for your time as well.
All right. We are on to public comment related to agenda items only. Anyone in the audience want to come address the commission on agenda items? All right. Seeing none, we are on to consent agenda. Now calling Commissioner Antor.
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Antor, support, support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, this is a roll call. Mr. McCumber, please call the roll.
On the consent agenda, Commissioners Vonck, Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Salfeld?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Lukowski?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yays, 0 nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We're on to item seven, resolutions, and I'll call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I'd like to move Resolution 21320, number 16, the Grand Rapids Lead Hazard Control Committee to develop grant appropriation from the Health Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Hennessy. Questions or comments on this item? All right. Seeing none, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are on to, I'm sorry, 7B. Now calling Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of Resolution 17 of today's date to accept the Kent County Community Action Budget Amendment. It comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner Steck. Questions or comments on this issue? All right. Seeing none, this is again not a roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are on to 7C, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Please, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 2132018, today's date, chief hazy cloud park acquisition, the Parks and Rec Department. I'm sorry, not Parks and Rec. We know what you mean. We got you. Parks Department.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, this is a roll call. Mr. McCumber, please call the roll.
All right. Resolution number 18 of today's date, Commissioner Vonck, Antor?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Breevy?
Yes.
Salfeld?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Lukowski?
Yes.
Wooden?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 16 yays, 0 nays. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We are on to item eight. This is public comment related to any general county matter. If you have any public comment today, come on up, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Scott Atchison. Pretty efficient, 623, and you're already on public comment. But basically, I'm here to try to convince you guys, make a compelling argument of why we need an information booth downtown, you know, right at Pearl and Monroe. And I'll come back to why it's gotta be at Pearl and Monroe, because what do we have now for an information booth, a welcome center, whatever you call it? I'm gonna tell you what we have. Whatever you call it, it's inside a gift shop, inside a museum, a block away from the main intersection, and it's closed more than it's open. That does not say welcoming to me. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to that. I went to Barcelona, Spain last November, and I stayed right by Plaza Cataluna. You walk up there, two information booths, staff with helpful humans, and everybody had a cellphone. But they still need information. I'm not from here. How do you go there? You have a movie theater in downtown Grand Rapids? Those are the type of things. You know, I got a couple of questions for you. What restaurants are open for Saturday and Sunday at lunch? That's whoever runs this information booth, information center at Pearl and Monroe. That would be their task every day, to make like lists of what's open. And basically, in an Excel spreadsheet, you turn it into a PDF, and then you can scan it into your device or pick it up on any internet connection. So everyone in this room will know what is open downtown. Just downtown. I told the Downtown Development Authority they should put $150,000 and give the money to like Rockford Construction, Orion, or Pioneer to build it. And the Convention and Visiting Bureau should run it every day of the year. Because I'm telling you, what do we have for an information center downtown? Whatever you call it, it's inside a gift shop, inside a museum, a block away from the main intersection, and it's closed more than it's open. And most of you don't even know it's there. I mean, it's, but I'm not saying the experience Grand Rapids is doing a bad job. I think they're doing a fine job. They're just not doing a complete job. How much time do I, I got a minute left? Oh, great. Somebody high up in municipal government that I respect said, we like the idea of an information booth downtown, and we're thinking about implementing it when we redo the river. I'm saying anywhere along the river is the wrong location. Pearl and Monroe. And I do have a picture, there used to be an information booth that said free tourist information right in front of the McKay Tower. You know, and, but, you know, I'm gonna end it here, but I still think the Downtown Development Authority should fund the construction of it, and the Convention and Visiting Bureau should run it. And what I wanna do is create the best information booth in this country for, for Grand Rapids downtown. Export it to other cities, because what we have now, it's inside a gift shop. Why would you have an information center inside a gift shop? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Good evening. Dan Burrow, 2879 Barkoff Drive, Southwest Wyoming, Michigan. I'm a current city council member for the city of Wyoming, and I have filed for the District Eight seat of Harold Voorhees. And along with that, I would just like to thank our four commissioners that are here tonight that represent either all or a portion of Wyoming, Commissioner Sparks, Ponstein, Voorhees, which is all of Wyoming, and Coleman. Again, I appreciate you representing the city of Wyoming, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment today? Going once, going twice. All right, we are going to move on to Item Nine, Commissioner Reports. Any official reports today? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have a strategic planning session for the airport this afternoon. It went from about noon to three-thirty. And I'd just like to report that just for the month of January, we're up eighteen percent. So when we're trying to look at ten-year trends, we've found that we're hitting a lot of our milestones in three and three-and-a-half years. So we're really trying to condense that and make sense of it, but we know that this kind of growth probably won't continue at this pace, but we're recognizing that we're in a very growth mode at the airports.
Commissioner Breevy?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have a couple of quick things about DPW. The first, you may have heard there's going to be a shutdown at the recycling center, and that's just to install some paper screens. And that will start February twenty-one, and it goes through March thirteen. And the department is asking you to hold on to your recyclables. Your holler will still pick them up, but they would not go to the recycling center. So if you want to continue recycling during that time, just hold on to it, and your holler will pick it up again at the end of that term. And you all have received a little brochure at your desk, too, about the recycling center. You can see some statistics, and you can see where a lot of our recycling goes. So there's some good information in there. The next item, too, is we have formed an advisory committee, and the purpose of that is to provide recommendations, overview, feedback, and, you know, continue working on our 2030 solid waste management plan. And we have a great bunch of people that are willing to be on it. So we have Mayor Bliss, Mayor Keppley from Kentwood, and representative from the Wyoming DPW. We have Commissioner Bukowski. Wayman Britt is on it, I am part of it as well. We have Supervisor Mike DeVries and Rob DeWort. And we have a Rockford City Manager, Thad Beard. And then we're also working on a member from the business community, and the right place is helping us determine that. So looking forward to getting this great bunch of people together to talk about trash. So thanks for the opportunity.
Great. Go from Bonk talking trash to you talking trash. Commissioner Talon?
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids DDA met yesterday. Three things of note that I'd like to share with you. One, hopefully you've seen some publicity about the planned improvements to the plaza of the Menando Arena. Kind of cool stuff. What I think is also exciting is that's one of three pieces to that complete project. The second one, which I think is as important, is improvements to the alleyway to the east of the Menando Arena, which also is kind of a gateway between the arena and the theater to the south. So there's lots of potential for what could happen in that alleyway, and taking it one step at a time, beginning with this front area. Second is, I think I mentioned this last month, but we've taken another step, and we'll be appointing a committee to look at what to do with the land around the YMCA downtown. A lot of that is owned by the DDA, including the parking lot, some of the, there's also a city lot that's owned there, a fair amount of property. And the DDA has always acquired that property with the intent of developing it eventually. And this is some of the last vacant land that's left in the downtown area. So really important to be strategic about that. We intend to do a process similar to what happened with the arena south area that ended up with some of the development that you see there now. Those appointments will be happening, I believe, in the next month. And the third thing is, I don't know if you've ever noticed, and I'm a guy, so I guess I didn't notice, but almost all the streets in Grand Rapids and probably other places have male names. And that apparently jumped out at a few folks, and some of the DDA, the DGRI staff, have decided to try to do something about that. And what they decided to do was do some alley activation, which we don't have a lot of here in Grand Rapids, but to really redo some alleys, make them inviting places, places where people will go, and name them after significant women in the history of Grand Rapids. It sounds a little weird, but it's really, ends up being a pretty empowering thing. I'll send some information about it, and I'm getting some looks, and hopefully those will change after you see the.
From the females.
That's actually, that's actually how I looked when I first heard it, too.
We're going to name Allen.
It's a start, it's a start. And last thing, we heard at the end a request from a citizen about building an information booth downtown that has helpful humans in it to provide information. So thank you for your.
Good. Commissioner Coleman?
Just a quick update, the Agricultural Preservation Board has started meeting. Just want to shout out to Matthew Van Zetten for, in my opinion, a very successful hiring process for the new role in the administrator's office to that end. And a lot of, which you all see in the next few weeks, a lot of really interesting and good kind of start of work to aggregate and map and display in a visual way all of the various data that'll be so useful for planning and helping all the various parties that plan, that'll keep, you know, development and economic growth going, while also keeping in mind long-term considerations of open space.
Great. Any other official reports tonight? All right, seeing none, we are on to miscellaneous. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank Lori and Wayman. So a Kent County resident contacted me today. He works with a lot of senior groups and thought it would be helpful to have on our main accesskent.com website the update on the coronavirus, because he said he gets questions all the time, he's searching for those updates, and he said, "In the event we do have something significant, knowing that that's there, right front and center, we'll make it very easy to communicate any additional updates or changes." And I'm glad that that's there. So thank you, Lori, for doing that, and he really appreciated the prompt response. So even though government does have a reputation for sometimes being slow, the fact that this happened at twelve-thirty today and it was done by five o'clock, I think is a nice, nice little feather in our cap for government can move efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. First, I just want to start out, this past week, we had the Spark meeting, which brought county commissioners from all across southwest Michigan. Want to thank Pam and her staff for getting everything ready and arranged. It's easy just to tell people what we would like to see it done was great. I want to thank DeVos Place for hosting it, the meal that was provided. Also want to thank Gus Wyler of the Sports Commission and Doug Small of Experienced Grand Rapids that showed and talked to the county commissioners throughout the region on what the importance of tourism in our sports commission and how we reach out, not just to Kent County, but to other counties throughout west Michigan. Also want to give a shout out to the Ford Museum that hosted a tour. One of their historians sat down and chatted with us for a while. So it was all in all a good day, and I, Wayman, I just want to thank you and your staff for everything they did to make that a success. Also, across my email the other day, I know the recycling center has brought this issue up before, and I've been keeping an eye on it. House bills fifty-four twenty-two and fifty-four twenty-five have been introduced by Rep. Brad Eden out of Kalamazoo. This is a bill that divides up on how the money for recycled bottles that have been paid the deposit but was never returned. They want to divide that money up into four different ways this time. Twenty percent going to distributors, twenty-five percent to retailers, fifteen to bottle enforcement, and then the other forty to go to cleanup and the trust fund. I know recycling centers across the state of Michigan collect a lot of these bottles in our systems. They've often advocated if we're collecting it, we should be at least at the table to get a portion of that money. We're not asking for all of it. A lot of the systems can easily tell you exactly how many we've taken in through recycling at a cost to taxpayers and then not get reimbursed. So if you want to just give your reps a shout on these two, they've just been introduced, but I think it's at least a fair question for them to ask why recycling centers aren't part of this distribution of the money that's never been given back. Thank you.
Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few weeks ago, somebody posted about suitcases that children and folks who sometimes end up in care have to put their possessions in a plastic garbage bag, and how much more efficient and for them and a little more dignified was if people who have extra suitcases, if they would bring them to, so I'm wondering, they asked me, "Harold, where would I bring it?" And I said, "I got to find out." So any info you might have as to places where people can, and it just happened, I said, you know, "We got six suitcases. We don't need six suitcases. Wouldn't it be nice if somebody who's maybe in that transition had a suitcase?" And so I just looking for information.
I think Matthew's on it already. I see him clicking his pen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Find it. All right, Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I wanted to mention that last weekend I had the pleasure of joining Second Ward Commissioners Jones and Assisi and Mayor Bliss for Snow Fest 2020 at Fulton Heights Neighborhood Association. And I brought that up because I had the pleasure of being invited by our new Ag Preservation Staff Member, Mr. Matthew Channing, who is a resident of Fulton Heights. He and his colleagues put on a great event, and thankfully there was actually snow on Snow Fest. I also had a question that arose while I was reading this presentation one more time regarding the census. Seeing so many of these hard-to-count demographics, also being people we often interact with through our multiple departments, have we worked to integrate the census work within these departments so that those who come to our health clinics, our human service office, our veteran services agency have access to fill out the census there and in fact could make that available to them while they are procuring our services?
I believe we have, but I will confirm and get back with you.
Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Saufeld?
Thank you, Chair. A few meetings back, Commissioner Talon was talking about how long it's been that he's served on the board, and it made me realize that I'm now one of the old timers, I think, just but for a few of you, and of course Scott. No one else was around back when I started on January first of 2011. But if you haven't seen it, I did put out a press release today, and I've made it known publicly for a long time now that this was going to be my last term. I've had some very positive opportunities come up with work that is just going to make it very difficult for me to make additional meetings after March. And so I've decided to step down effective March fifteenth. I've informed our chair and Wayman Britt, so I'll still be here for another month, but after that, I'll only be seeing you if I'm sitting in the row over there, maybe with Scott or something, so. But I'll save comments for my last meeting, but just wanted to make you aware of that. And very happy to go out on the note that we're on, because as I said in my press release today, I do think that Kent County is doing the best it's ever done right now. So I'm very pleased about that. Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous today? All right, I just have two quick things. Want to remind you, our next meeting is the twenty-seventh, and we do have a board retreat after board. And I got the agenda from Wayman on Monday, and it's a lot. So I think we're going to be pretty productive, I hope, at that meeting. It's a lot of stuff to discuss for the upcoming year, so I hope you can make the board retreat. And then, secondly, I just want to get this out there as soon as possible. Commissioner Saufeld did call me this afternoon to give us a heads up. I immediately asked him to call Linda. I guess lucky for me and for our board, they have, we've been through this before a little bit. I think Commissioner Jones and I are a product of this process. So we're looking, Linda provided me with a couple of talking points I just wanted to share. If March fifteenth is the date, we by law have thirty days to fill this position, which would make it April thirteenth. The county will issue a news release next week detailing the process to fill the vacancy and how you would apply for the position. So I would expect to look for that and then get that out to the community. The application window will be two weeks, because we still have to get it through Executive Committee and through full board. Unfortunately, if April thirteenth is the thirty-day deadline, we don't have a board meeting that beginning part of April scheduled, so we will have to get it done in March. Pers standing rules five point two D, the Executive Committee is required to evaluate the candidates and make a recommendation to the full board of commissioners. The full board of commissioners will consider the recommendation, and the final appointment will be done by resolution. The entire process is subject to the Open Meetings Act. So with that, if there is nothing else, I will call on Commissioner Antor for motion to adjourn.
I'd like to move to adjourn, something called Chair Thursday, February seventh.
Retreat? Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Antor, support by Commissioner Sparks. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.